Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Bertani, Councilmember Moy, Councilmember Vaccaro, Vice Mayor Tim, Mayor Price.
Here, thank you very much, and the invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rick Vaccaro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Lord, please bless over our city, all our citizens, and all the people that work here to keep everybody safe, especially over the next couple of months when the weather gets very hot and people lose their tempers a little bit. And please bless everybody else in our country that needs the help, the people that are suffering, the people that are homeless, the people that are suffering from national disasters throughout the world. In Jesus' name, amen.
And Councilman Moy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you very much, and we'll start council reports. Councilman Moy, would you like to begin, please?
I just wanted to start by thanking anybody who's here. It is nicer out today than it has been the last couple of days, and I appreciate everybody at home is taking the time to look at us. And I want to start off by thanking our city manager. I think a few weeks ago, we had a citizen, a retired police officer come up and say that he saw our city manager out with his, well, he had his tie on, which we're gonna, you know, give him a checkmark for that, but he was out cleaning garbage off of the linear trail in different places. Well, that's not just a one-time thing. The city manager does this regularly. I got a text from last night inviting me to come in the middle of the heat to go clean it up, and I had some lame excuse, but he went out and cleaned up, and he even carries a rake with him now, so he can do a lot of garbage cleanup in an hour or whatever. So he's here at 7:30 at night after he's worked, you know, for 12 hours during the day, and then goes out and cleans, you know, whatever needs to be cleaned, on the streets, the trails, whatever. I'll tell you, that is not in his job description, and so he's just being a citizen volunteer, and I appreciate it. I also, and other staff, too, you mentioned, I wanted to say to the Parks and Recreation, I know we're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight, that they have done magnificent work over the last year, and especially now with the kids out of school. I know, 'cause I deal with children every day who, well, are homeless and don't have money, but they have found ways to allow them to partake of the swimming pool and do other activities that you would have if you had a little bit of money, and these children obviously do not. And so I appreciate the work, so all of our children, whether you're poor, if you have a home, you don't, or if you're wealthy, that you can all swim together. I know growing up here in Fairfield, that was a big deal for me to go down to the plunge, and so, and so it was a great time. I also, not last, I just, you know, really appreciate all of our staff who are working at levels beyond what they should be having to work with. We're like, I guess the population of our staff is about from 20 years ago, even though we've grown in population greatly in the last 20 years, and I appreciate them. I personally want to thank the firefighters and the medics who showed up when my uncle called last week. My aunt died of a massive heart attack, and the, our fire department went in and did what they could to resuscitate her, but there was no saving her. If there were, they would have saved her, she had a massive heart attack. But they worked on her all the way to the hospital, and what I really appreciate is the kindness of the medics and our firefighters to my uncle, who obviously was shocked and in immediate grief, and to have that, those kind of skills to take care of somebody or work on somebody who is dying or who has died, and to take care of those who are grieving around them and in shock and pain is special. It takes special people, and we have them here in Fairfield, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vaccaro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I know we've gone through a couple of heat waves here recently, so I do want to acknowledge our fire and police and all our city workers that are out there working in this type of heat. I know it's not easy over the summer, so I want to acknowledge them. Also, the Fourth of July Parade was once again a great event, so for Scott Tonason and Margaret Monzo, the people that helped put it together, everybody with them. I think this year was just, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, what do you think, about as crowded as we've seen it? It was really a very nice event this year. I also want to, a couple of friends of mine at Fairfield-Sassoon Unified asked me to make a couple of announcements about job fairs on July 19th. Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District is gonna have a classified job fair that is for openings for bus drivers, child nutrition, clerical positions, custodial, and paraeducators, and it's from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and that's 2490 Hillborne Road, and that's the district office, so that's July 19th, which is tomorrow, from 8:30 to 11:30, and their same-day testing will be available. There'll also be a list of permanent positions available at the fair. And on July 20th, from 8:30 to 11:30 in the morning, at 2490 Hillborne Road, there's gonna be a certificated recruitment fair, and they will be accepting applications online with a critical need for multiple subject teachers, special education teachers, math, science, foreign language, and PE teachers. So once again, that's tomorrow, I'm sorry, that's Thursday, July 20th, for certificated at 2490 Hillborne Road. There's some great opportunities in our school district for some employment, so people that are looking for a career in education or just for a change, I would recommend you go out there and work for our wonderful school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And I should like to report that this morning, over at the County Event Center, Solano County launched their website, Solano Cares for Seniors. It's an incredibly easy system to use, so that the seniors in our community, countywide now, it can get the help that they need, including the ability to find things that appeal to them so they can volunteer. It's a wonderful service, and I know that it's going to be used quite a bit. Seniors, Solano Seniors Care, okay? And then the other comment I'd like to make, it deals with Travis Air Force Base. Every month, the Travis Armed Forces Committee meets and discusses a variety of issues, and one of the most important yesterday was the wing commanders explaining how that fire that started over in Sassoon City and then very quickly spread to Travis, how folks responded throughout the area, because they have stables out at Travis, and there were some 50 horses, and almost like magic, almost like Hollywood, trucks towing trailers came, and all of those horses were transported out of the area and were saved very successfully. Pretty remarkable, and the wing commander was very appreciative of that kind of community support that really matters in emergencies. And then the other comment from the Colonel was this one. It's his annual economic impact statement for Solano County and surrounding areas. And it may surprise you that the economic impact directly last year was $1.65 billion. Pretty impressive. And he will be the featured speaker at the Economic Development Corporation breakfast next week, so if you have an opportunity over at the Hilton, please attend that. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Good evening, I wanted to do a couple of things. One is, I wanted to start off with a thank you to City Council. So with the budget that you adopted, you gave us authority to really augment in a strategic way our homeless strategy, and so that occurred in two fashions. One, you authorized us moving ahead and hiring a case manager to support our homeless intervention team in the police department, so I just wanted to announce that we are out recruiting that position. That position, the recruitment closes July, and I just want to put a plug out for that because our homeless intervention team, led by Officer Utsushiba, is a fabulous resource to our police department. It supports and builds from the enforcement side, but they work very hard to connect homeless individuals to resources and family and housing, and so it's the other side of the house that they're engaged in. The second component that we are working on, and I really want to commend Pat Giles, who is a senior manager over in our corporation yard, is you authorized us implementing a quality-of-life team in our Public Works Department. And so he didn't want to wait until the permanent staff were on board, he's automatically got that team on the streets, and they're working hand and glove with our homeless intervention team cleaning up camps throughout the community. Since the team was formed July 3rd, in just a couple of weeks, they've already cleaned up seven camps, and they're very busy this week cleaning up more, and I can assure you that the work is arduous, it is difficult, but they are very committed. In addition to that, I just really want to emphasize the proactive nature of this team, so their job really is to not wait for work orders to come to them, but to make their own work orders, and they've been working very hard, patrolling the community, looking for litter, looking for debris, really showing the pride that we have in the community and that all the employees have, and so I just really want to commend him on that and thank you for trusting us to move forward with these initiatives. It means a lot to us, and we think we're making a big difference. The second thing I want to do is really reinforce, so we've, a big theme this year has been community engagement, community engagement, community engagement, and so we've talked about a lot of different ways that we've been doing that. So the police department has been very proactive this year in a lot of different formats, having community engagement forums, and this week, they actually have two. So on Wednesday, at the Sullivan Interagency Youth Services Center, they will be having the Central PSA Neighborhood Watch Meeting. On Saturday, they'll be having Coffee with the Cop at Napa Deli, and you can get all this information from the city's Facebook page, from the police department's Facebook page. On Friday night at Rolling Hills Park, we'll have our pop-up movie night, Beauty and the Beast, in partnership with the Edge Church, and that's just been a fabulous partnership with that church. And then on Sunday, we'll have our next installment affair filled together over at Cordelia Community Park, and so I really want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department under the direction of Ann Matola for really working very hard to bring new venues, new events, new programs to the community, really to help build communities. So I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of these events, 'cause we are enjoying them very much on our end. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And Mr. City Attorney, would you like to report out on our action the council took last week in closed session, please?
Yes, the council met in closed session to discuss the Tate case, pending in Fairfield County, Fairfield, I'm sorry, Solano County Superior Court, and the council approved on a 5-0 vote, a settlement of $32,000 to settle that case.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you have a report, please?
No, I have no report, thank you.
Okay, then we'll go to presentations, and our first presentation, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
And that's for the Sarcoma Awareness Month, July 2017 proclamation.
And Moy, would you read the proclamation, please?
Mr. Mayor, first, I wanted to thank you for bringing this proclamation forward about rare cancers, sarcomas. One in a hundred cancers are a sarcoma, and they are extremely rare, and I'm part of a group, the Sarcoma Alliance. They were supposed to be here tonight, but this is somebody who is living, a survivor with the disease, and some things happened, and she was not able to come tonight, so I'm gonna accept this on their behalf, but I appreciate this, Mr. Mayor, 'cause we're trying to get Congress to do the same. Awareness of this is really important, and so this is a proclamation for Sarcoma Awareness Month of July 2017. Whereas a soft tissue sarcoma is a rare type of cancer, accounting for about 1% of all newly diagnosed cancers that arise in the connective tissue of the body, and where the National Institutes of Health designate sarcoma as a rare form of cancer, with sarcoma containing approximately 7D, seven zero different subtypes. They are largely resistant to chemotherapy, immunotherapy, radiation therapies, and so they pose a formidable challenge for researchers and specialists, whereas only a few physicians have experience in dealing with sarcomas, so it is not uncommon for it to be difficult to arrive at a diagnosis, and generally, there is not a cure. Whereas sarcoma subtypes have largely not received benefit from immunotherapies due to the complexity of the DNA, the genomes, mutations associated with sarcoma subtypes. And whereas the National Institute of Health classifies leiomyosarcoma as a malignant aggressive subtype of soft tissue sarcoma, it's derived from smooth muscle cells typically of the uterus, the GI tract, or gastrointestinal soft tissue, and it can metastasize in the bones, spine, brain, liver, really anywhere. And LMS primarily affects adults without regard to gender and strikes only seven in a million people. Research and clinical trials for LMS remain complicated, and the prospects for long-term survival remain poor. Whereas Fairfield residents are affected by sarcoma, including Councilwoman Catherine Moy, who was diagnosed with incurable LMS, and whereas multidisciplinary care coordination teams, because of their expertise and experience, are critical to the health of sarcoma and LMS patients. And whereas sarcomas are a rare cancer of soft tissue and bone, sarcoma is often found after it has already advanced too far. Whereas recognition of July as Sarcoma Awareness Month will aid in raising the profile of this forgotten cancer, and whereas increased education and awareness in LMS will contribute to the well-being of the communities of all of the United States and around the world. Now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Sarcoma Awareness Month, and I recognize the challenges faced by sarcoma and LMS patients and their caregivers. Commend the dedication of organizations, volunteers, researchers, and caregivers across the country, working to improve the quality of life of sarcoma and LMS patients and their families, and three, recommend that all healthcare plans include a sarcoma specialist to increase survivability of sarcoma patients. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed, Mayor Harry Price. I can tell you that, yeah, I was supposed to be dead a long time ago. There are no sarcoma specialists in Solano County, there are no sarcoma specialists anywhere in the Kaiser system, there are none in North Bay, and there are cancer doctors who have to deal with this, because it happens, one in a hundred cancers, again, become a sarcoma. But, you know, once a year at least, I try to educate, especially women, on one that's real preventable, and that is, if you have a uterus and you're having what they call fibroids, and they tell you that they are not cancer, absolutely not, I was told that, tell them that you want the whole thing taken out. Do not allow them to cut it up inside you. I did, and I paid for it, 'cause it spread my cancer, and so I ask females, especially those who've gone through menopause, to please, don't let them take it out in small pieces. No, doesn't happen with anybody but women, actually, that tumors are cut up. So I'm really rabid about that, if you will. So I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everybody listening. Proclamations aren't always the funnest things to read or talk about, but much needed. And if you want to know more about sarcomas, go to sarcomaalliance.org, and you'll find all kinds of resources there to help you if you happen to be one of the people who get that. There are many people who are survivors, I am. I don't intend to die from this cancer, and I intend to keep leading in this city in whatever manner I can, and I will not let this cancer get me. We have loved ones that we all know who have, are dealing with sarcomas, and so I pray for them. I'll tell you, that's the best thing that ever happened to me, were the prayers that I got, and that's what saved me. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And our second presentation, Ann Matola, please. Parks and Recreation Development, good news tonight.
Really good news. I think I'm green. Now I'm green, okay. A little bit of time to tell you what's happening with our next activity guide. It should be hitting your mailboxes in a week from today. One of the things that we're very, very excited about in this next issue is we have another partnership, and we really like it when we add new partners from the community. For the first time, we're going to be offering a camp, it's gonna be a winter break camp for children with special needs, and the name of the organization we're working with is Special Care Supported Living Services, and this is a pilot program with this group, and what the intention is to do moving forward is to do a more robust offering of camps, particularly with our summer camp programs, and looking where to drop in different types of enrichment classes throughout the year. So we're very excited to see how this first one goes and to be reporting back to you on that in the future. As you know, in the activity guide, we like to focus not only just on parks and recreation, but on what's happening around the city. This tends to be a really great time of year for a lot of things throughout the city, and I do want to give a shout-out to the fire department, who always does a really wonderful job. In October, it tends to be Fire Prevention Month, and they do a series of fire prevention activities, there's a Fire Prevention Week, and so that's all listed in your activity guide. And also Environmental Services has a couple of different events, recycling events and shredding events, so please do take time to look through those city pages, 'cause there's lots of really great services and resources for you to take advantage of. Once again, our events calendar, it's growing and growing, and we actually have, in the Fall Activity Guide, we're still running our pop-up movies and our Fairfield Together events, they go all the way through September. We're fortunate that we have great weather where we can do outdoor events into the fall. We're really pleased to be offering, for the first time, at least in the last two years, an open house for our Senior Day Program. We're really proud of this very special service that we provide to our elder community members or those frail elderly that maybe need a place to go and socialize during the day with some added care, and so on October 11th, from 4 to 6, we're gonna have our program staff there so they can walk them through them, show them what the program is about, and hopefully to add some people to our enrollment there. We have a really great, unique take on a pumpkin patch at our pool, so Bobbing for Pumpkins will be taking place on October 21st, it is not to be missed. And also, we have been doing some free community concerts, we're now in our third year, they are sponsored by the Fairfield Community Services Foundation, and these are the next two that will be coming up in September and December. Program-wise, this issue is very much intensive on our after-school programs, it brings people back to school. Fun on the Run, which runs year-round, is also advertised in there, going back to their school year schedule. And one of the really great things about Fun on the Run, which happens, we have an equal partner in sharing this, again, with the Fairfield Community Services Foundation, it's more than just going and engaging children in recreational play after-school hours. Through the generosity of the foundation, there's a lot of other supplemental things that happen, and those include our backpack giveaway, we have a toy drive, and also, new this year, we have a coat giveaway, so those children that don't have coats, our staff will be making sure that they have the appropriate attire for the winter months. I also want to take a minute to let you know that July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and so you're gonna see things branded this way pop up on Facebook quite a bit through the month. Kind of... the month, kind of encouraging the community to get their play on. We don't play enough in our, just in our lives. And in our Parks and Recreation Department, we have plenty of opportunities and really great assets for people to get engaged into play, get more activity in their lives. So please, look at those. There are going to be some fun facts which are connected to health and fitness as well. And also, as we were talking about July as National Parks and Recreation Month, and looking at all the different programs that we offer as a Parks and Recreation Department, we were having a real difficult time separating the ones that were most impactful from the Fairfield Community Services Foundation. You know, we have this really remarkable partnership, and this graphic demonstrates the support that the Parks and Recreation Department is receiving this year and all the different programs that are being supported by the Community Services Foundation. And I want to add that this is just what comes to the Parks and Recreation Department. They're also very active, and they have an assist-a-grad program, and they have other projects that they've been doing in the community as well. And so we thought that this evening, you know, since it's Parks and Recreation Month, that it would be really appropriate to give them a very special acknowledgement. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor.
Sean Quinn, Kathy Parsons, Kevin Corella, and Kim Marshall, please. And if there are any other folks from the foundation here, we'd love to have you come up. And if you, Sean, if you'd lead them into the well, please. This is pretty impressive. Lots of smiles. Anne, you want to join them, please?
Office of the Mayor, Fairfield, California. Proclamation Fairfield Community Services Foundation Day, July 18, 2017. Whereas each year since 1985, Americans have celebrated July as a National Parks and Recreation Month to recognize the importance of parks and recreation in establishing and maintaining the quality of life for and contributing to the physical, economic, and environmental well-being of communities. And whereas the Fairfield Community Services Foundation was founded in 1994 as a private nonprofit 501(c) organization to provide support for parks, recreation, community services in Fairfield, with the particular focus on outreach to underserved populations. And whereas since its inception, the Fairfield Community Services Foundation has provided more than $1.8 million in support of programs and equipment, including park amenities, community concerts, senior dinners, a swim scholarship program, the Fun on the Run Mobile Recreational Program, backpack school supplies giveaway, coats for youth in need, and a toy drive. And whereas the Fairfield Community Services Foundation has been an equal partner in providing operational support for the Fun on the Run program that provides mobile recreation programming for more than 13,000 children in 30 neighborhoods throughout the city since 2005. And whereas since its inception, the Fairfield Community Services Foundation has provided more than $50,000 in youth scholarships through the Assist-A-Grad program. And whereas the city of Fairfield values the model partnership with the Fairfield Community Services Foundation that has allowed the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Department to provide recreational programs and services and enhance the quality of life for those who may not otherwise have had an opportunity to participate. Whereas the city of Fairfield values the model partnership with the Community Services Foundation and has allowed the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Department to provide those opportunities. Now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, do hereby proclaim today, July 18, 2017, to be Fairfield Community Services Foundation Day, and express our appreciation for the outstanding service.
Prime rib in the park. Prime rib in the park. When is it coming, please? August 26. That's their major fundraising effort, and it's supported by everybody who values the importance of providing our folks, our residents, these opportunities. So Sean, Kevin, Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council for this proclamation. I'm Sean Quinn. I'm the president of the Community Services Foundation this year. And Anne Matola's already covered a lot of the things that we do in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department. And I want to talk about what a great job Herner's staff do. They're a lot of fun to work with. We provide services both to seniors and to the youth, and they are great partners to work with on this. As Anne mentioned, we also do a couple other things besides working in partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department, Assist-A-Grad program, which we're actually expanding this next year. So we'll be providing more scholarships to the youth. And for the first time ever, we've actually made a grant to another organization this year, and we made a grant to the San Marco Property Owners Association to refurbish the park at San Marco Street. And if you remember, going back 15 years ago, that park was originally built with Community Development Block grant funds, was granted from the city to the owners of the San Marco Street property owners out there. And the park is heavily used and needs some refurbishment. So we made a grant to them to refurbish all the equipment out there. Should be done in about a month and be reopened out there, and so we're really excited about that. And as the mayor mentioned, on August 26, we have one of our primary fundraisers, which is in partnership with the Alliance Club, which is prime rib in the park. And then on September 30, we have our second major fundraiser, which is the Lobster Boil, which is in partnership with the Twilight Rotary Club. So we encourage everybody to come out to those events. They're a lot of fun, and the money goes to good things. 99.9% of all the money we raise goes to services in this community. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Only in Fairfield.
If you would read the process for public comments, please.
Okay.
Thank you for taking care of my colleagues who are starving.
My pleasure. Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered under public comments. The public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the meeting, or at the latest prior to the time for public comments on that item. Speakers are required, requested to limit their comments to four minutes with one minute to summarize their remarks.
Thank you. And our first speaker will be Mr. Jeffrey Trager, please. The Cecil B. DeMille of Fairfield.
Mayor, do we want to do the housing authority?
I'm sorry?
Oh.
I wish I had his bank account, Mr. Mayor. This, at the Downtown Theater, the very successful run of Annie ends on the 23rd, this Sunday. On Saturday, I have the, I have the Tom Petty tribute band called Petty Theft. And then on the 5th of August, I'm going to take you back to one of the great times in the history of entertainment in this country, Tribute to the Rat Pack. Okay, I've got four really, really funny comedians that'll be coming in, complete with the band. That's Saturday, August 5th. So everybody sees this. So that's what we have coming up. We have, we have other shows. We have Will Durs coming, coming in September, Sweeney Todd in September, put on by the Missouri Street Theater. So please, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And Tim Madigan, please. To be followed by Philip Doty, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Tim Madigan, the supervising librarian at the Cordelia Branch of Solano County Library. Good evening, everyone. And I just wanted to come and mention that we're still in the middle of summer reading, Reading by Design this year. It's a big library program every year. Studies show the kids that don't read at least two books over the summer lose 25% to 50% of their academic gain every year. So it's really important that kids keep reading and keep involved. And one of the best ways to do that is finding the books that the kids want to read. I always tell them about a study I read that the kids are, have the flashlight in bed reading when mom and dad think they're asleep and do better in school. So we have thousands of books to help them get the choice of books that they really get excited about. As mentioned a couple times, serving underserved populations here, and of course, at the library, everything's free. So that's a great way for kids to keep up with. Other families are purchasing books, they can come get the books for free, read what other kids are reading, keep involved there. All our programs are free as well this summer. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Friends of the Fairfield Sassoon Libraries. They've raised a lot of money for us for programs. Today, we had the magician Magic Dan at the Cordelia Library, about 150 kids, and they're really excited, really enjoying it. Tomorrow, at the Fairfield Civic Center Library across the street over here, we'll be Reading by Design at 3:30. And Coventry and Colusa will be at the Sassoon Library at 10:00 tomorrow morning. They do a little acrobatic magic act, which is tons of fun, great fun for the whole family. We have lots of prizes this year, and some of the prizes have a little early date for the drawing. On August 1st, the San Francisco Giants were very generous in giving us tickets this year to give away. This is before they knew what direction the season was going. So I, so you need to be, complete the first round of reading to get in the drawing for the Giants tickets for August 1st, because different games have different dates. So we want to make sure we have time to get hold of everybody. There's also a drawing for raffles for ferry tickets and Exploratorium in San Francisco. Teens can get a drawing for a free iPad Mini. A lot of those drawings go a little bit further until September 1st. So we have drawings for kids, you know, the little babies can get involved as well, doing the activities, get them ready to learn to read later, visiting the library, playing with toys, getting away from the screens. Adults can participate as well. You have $5 away from your fines from the library if you have fines. We got a free book to Friends of the Library again. This Thursday evening, also, the Cordelia Library, we're having our Stuffed Animals Sleepover. There's a special storytime with Kristen at 6:30 in the evening. Kids will come, leave their stuffed animals, the teen volunteers will help, and come pick up the pictures the next morning at the storytime there to see what their stuffed animals are up to. So we've got a lot going on. Still, take a look at solanolibrary.com anytime for see what else is going on, and I'll come back in the fall to tell you what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. And Philip Doty, please, to be followed by Tom Nelson, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Two items. I talked with Mayor Price last week, so he knows what I'm going to talk about, but two things. I drive in from my church out of Rockville Presbyterian, and as you leave Rockville, the speed limit is posted at 45. Well, you go all the way through. If I could drive 45 around the roundabout or rotary, I'd be doing very well. But if I get down about 150 feet from the driveway to the Seek Temple, there's a sign that says 35. Well, I'm guessing that's the city limit. There's no sign that says city limit of Fairfield. Well, from there, until you get almost to Ledgewood Creek over crossing, you're doing fine. And then the speed limit goes back to 45. And I can drive through three stoplights over to Nation's Hamburgers, and the speed limit is now 35. So one of these days, I'm going to try my luck and see if I can go 45 and hope all three spotlight, or stoplights are green until I get to Nation's. If I get stopped, I shall say, but the signage is right. Anyway, just thought you should know, and I believe, Mr. White, you know about this. Secondly, on the 4th of July, I stayed home, I was under the weather, and I watched Channel 26. Well, at your last meeting, you were very complimentary about Channel 26. It does a very good job. I believe we could say that's our city's channel, 2627. And the folks who were doing the announcing that day were very good. I believe one, if not both of them, are members of the faculty out at Solano College. Well, things went quite well for a while, and then boop, the screen went absolutely black for five seconds or so. Came back on, here we see a picture, another five, 10, 15 seconds, boop, black again. And that went on for the rest of the parade. They had somebody, man on the street, and that started out quite nicely. He was a young man doing a very good job. Unfortunately, after a while, the picture of him went into thousands of little colored pixels, and then you couldn't see what was going on. So I thought, well, that's certainly not a representative, a representation for Fairfield. Maybe we could do something. I've already called Bill Way, who I think is getting tired of my calling, but when I see something like that, I'll give him a call. But city council or the staff that takes care of it might want to look into that. So those are the two things. The other thing, you mentioned about school district doing some hiring coming up on Thursday for certificated. I did not hear anything about music teachers being interviewed. I wish that were the case. We need those. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Nelson, please, to be followed by our final speaker, Mr. George Quinn. Tom?
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Tom Nelson. You folks all know why I'm here. Something about tee times for kids. Spoiler alert, for anybody that wants, doesn't want to know what's going to happen next week at the special council meeting on what the Golf Advisory Board is going to announce. All right. They are going to recommend that nothing happens and that the status quo remain the same for the tee times. On the other hand, I still have hope because I know that the Golf Advisory Board serves at your pleasure, and it's the city council that actually makes the final decision on these things. So the one thing that I have, one last comment or one last thing to think about, is why was Rich Cessna fighting this thing tooth and nail not to allow kids starting times for juniors, okay? Even at his own admission, that 66% of the tee times in the afternoon go unused. Again, two out of three tee times in the afternoon, afternoon, when the kids, when I was asking for kids to make tee times, they currently go unused, and Rich Cessna doesn't want to give those kids tee times, and he fought it like you can't believe. So just to let you know, in his own words... ... the best sentence to the end of the golfer, and in fact, the overall facility revenue. Even the impression that someone is taking too long to play is enough to reach golf. And we all blame the people that just assume somebody is playing slow and intercepts that. Golfers will change their golf habits based on what groups play on certain days. The golfer checking in basically, high school teens even often complain about slow play, even though the kids maybe weren't on the golfers' name. Again, just the impression is enough to scare all people. Okay. So in case you couldn't hear what he was saying, okay? What he's saying is, is that even if the kids slow play, or pace of play, what they call it, is if it's slow, it really impacts the enjoyment of the game for everybody on the golf course. People that see kids on the golf course, even if the kids are scratch golfers and are the greatest golfers around, perceive that they're slow, and therefore, they're detrimental to the golf courses and detrimental to the revenue of the golf courses. So perception is what he's saying should keep these kids from being able to make a tee time. Under that premise, okay, the question is, is that fair? Just because some people, some adults are prejudiced and think kids are slow, even if they're not, should that mean that all kids should suffer because of it? And under that logic, there's more prejudice than just kids. Women are perceived to be slow on the golf course. Should we take the ability for women to be able to make starting times away from them? How about the seniors? They're also perceived to be slow. They're not always. Some are, some aren't. Some, you know, regular, you know, 20 to 40-year-olds are slow. The question is...
Tom, would you conclude, please?
Yeah. The question is about fairness at this particular thing and about prejudice in this particular situation. Do you want to allow prejudice of the few to hinder the ability of the juniors to be able to use our golf courses? And that's the only thing I ask you to think about between now and the next meeting. And I trust that you folks will do the best for what's, for the kids.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Tom, just a preface for the 25th.
Go ahead.
Yep, thank you. And just a preface for the 25th. So you, you coach a lot of the...
So you, you coach a lot of the young players up there, is that right?
I have.
Okay. But you can't charge them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because that's, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
That's the wrong Beverly law. That's settled law.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Mr. George Gwynn, please.
Good evening, once again. I saw in the paper where you guys were talking about having, I think it was three acres for industrial use, the red top. I think that's a very good thought, because there's plenty of housing around already, and as you well know, housing doesn't pay its way. So I think anything you guys can do to promote any sort of business or industry is a much better way to go than more housing. So I'm glad to see that you're moving in that direction. The other thing is that the spokesperson for the library tonight was talking about stuff that's free at the library. Well, it's like a lot of things that involve government. It may be advertised as free, but taxpayers pay for anything that happens. And taxpayers really should get credit for those kinds of things, because it's really their money that's making it possible. It's not just coming out of thin air unless you're talking about the federal government, in which case they, they print the money, and there's not always anything to back it up, but just the belief that it has value. So, anyway, I would appreciate it if you guys would mention the taxpayer from time to time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will convene the meeting of the Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bertani, Commissioner Moy, Commissioner Vaccaro, Vice Chairman Tim, Chairman Price.
Here. And we do have a quorum. And all items on the consent calendar will be approved with one motion unless a member of the audience or council member chooses to take separate action. I don't have any request to speak cards. Councilman Vaccaro? Motion to approve? Okay. Is there a second, please? It's been moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We'll then reconvene the City Council meeting. And again, consent calendar, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Again, I don't have any request to speak cards. Councilman Moy, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question I asked the city manager before the meeting, and wanted to know if he had an answer for me. Sorry about the frog in my throat. On item number nine.
Our, George Hicks, our Director of Public Works, was able to look into the matter, so he'll have a response for you.
All right, thank you. The question, so we can have it out here...
If you'd repeat the question, please.
Sure. My question was, we're talking about putting a new roof on part of the buildings down here, and it's a new type of material. And being a roofer's wife, I know that it's never a good idea to walk on your roofs, especially the kind of roofing that we're going to be putting on this. And so I was wondering if there are, they have a fancy name from, let's just call them walkways, that you usually put in so you keep people from walking on the roof in case there's air conditioning or other things that need to be accessed on top of the roof. That's my question.
Great question. Could tell you're a roofer's wife. For these roofs, they can take light occasional traffic, but if you look on the police department roof, we've done this roof, this is our third time at it. We do put those walkways anyplace there's mechanical equipment. The good news on this roof is there is none. There's very periodic access to the roof for maybe servicing skylights. There's a couple skylights and a couple roof drains, and that's it. No mechanical equipment out there at all, so should be no foot traffic.
Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? Entertainer motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted, has been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to new business, item number 17, please.
Resolution 2017-182 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the purchase of two Type 5 brush units and two Type 1 fire engines.
Our presenter will be Steve Tropanier, please. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Tropanier, Deputy Fire Chief. The Fire Department is requesting adoption of this resolution. All the vehicles slated for replacement have reached their useful life, and reliability is becoming an issue. Additionally, the Type 5 brush units being replaced pose a significant safety issue due to their single cab configurations. These proposed vehicles will drastically enhance our response to vegetation fires, especially in the wildland urban interface surrounding the city. The Type 1 engines recommended for purchase meet all the needs to support the mission of the Fire Department, including response to fires, EMS calls, vehicle accidents, USR incidents, and the unified response to violent incident programs. I'm here to answer any questions you have regarding the purchase of these vehicles.
Comments or questions? Saying done, entertainer motion then to approve. It's been moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Moy, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. And Cap, Chief, thank you. Item number 18, Madam Clerk, please.
Resolution 2017-183 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving plans and specifications and awarding a contract to California Trenchless Incorporated for the sanitary sewer 2017 rehabilitation project.
Thank you.
Big Bird's Record, Lucy, please.
Julie Lucido. Before I jump into the information about the contract award, I want to talk a little bit about the background, some of the conditions of our sewer lines, prioritizing sewer projects and sewer replacements. So about 18 months ago, we began a process to assess the conditions of the sanitary sewer lines in some of our older neighborhoods. And up on the screen, you can see in the, the red outline, basically where our 1950s subdivisions are. And so, within that area, we talked to our maintenance crews, and our maintenance crews spent an incredible amount of time kind of in that, that gold area. So we looked at that as really our first area for this assessment of our sewer lines. So that's specifically North Texas, Travis, West Texas, and I, oh, excuse me, sorry, I-80 area. So the positive aspect of gravity sewer lines is that you can actually send a video camera down the lines, take a condition assessment, so you know what kind of condition these lines are in. So within that area, we saw what we expected. These lines are 60 to 70 years old, and we know that they need replacement. What we found is, there's areas affected by cracks, sagging, joints have split, and there's substantial blockages, a lot of mature trees in this area, that our crews are out there constantly having to take care of. Okay, and so, here's one of our workers on the job. We've got five maintenance workers, that their job is to go out and clean these lines. And let me switch back to this. So within that gold area, that represents about 5% of our sanitary sewer lines in the city. We've got two of the five workers that are constantly in this area. So that's 40% of our resources, targeted at really just 5% of the area. And so what these, what the maintenance workers do, it's what our Public Works Manager calls aggressive preventive maintenance. And so there's areas of blockages in these older lines, that they can help reduce the number of sewer overflows by being out there and aggressively tackling these areas. And so they're circulating this area, and some of the lines are being cleaned actually on a three-month cycle, so very, very frequently. It's not, it's not sustainable. I mean, we're able to make do, but these lines really do need to be replaced. So within that overall gold area, kind of the worst of the worst is west of Pennsylvania. And so we've targeted that area and taken that area as our first, really, seven projects. We've got seven projects in that area, or enough area to cover about seven years of work, is how I should say it. So as we've put the projects, started to put the projects together, we've outlined what we will do this year in 2017, and that's shown in pink. We've also outlined what we're going to do in 2018. But beyond 2018, there is not significant rev, or sufficient revenue coming in from Fairfield Sassoon Sewer District to continue those, those projects. So what staff and the city is going to need to do is continue to talk to, or begin to talk to Fairfield Sassoon Sewer District about increasing revenues to the city and rate sharing, so that we have adequate revenues to continue with the projects in that area. So again, that's kind of the, the global area for the next seven years. And so that gets us to the project that we're going to undertake this year. This is the 2017 rehabilitation project. It will replace about three-quarters of a mile of sewer line, and about 100 laterals and cleanouts. So those are the services, services to each and every property. This work is going to be very disruptive, and that's something, as we go into this, we know. We began outreach to the residents a couple months ago. We've sent a letter. As we form, or we develop the construction schedules, we'll continue the outreach to those residents, so they know what to expect. But in general, there'll be a trench that goes right down the middle of the centerline of the roadway, and then a lateral, so then a trench to each and every property off of that centerline to get the pipe in. And so it's really the only way to get this work done. And again, it will be over the next six months and disruptive to the neighbors. So the bids for this project were opened on June 13th. We received five bids. The lowest bid was submitted by California Trenchless Incorporated. They met all the requirements, and so with that bid opening, we recommend that the City Council approve the plans and specifications, and they award the contract to California Trenchless in the amount of $1,358,405.
Any comments or questions for Julie? Entertainer motion then to approve Resolution 2017-183. It's been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro, all in favor? Aye. Pass you, Nancy. Julie, thank you very much. And the sewer fee is on the agenda for the Fairfield Sassoon Sewer District on Monday evening, so the discussions will begin. It affects not just Fairfield, but it also affects Sassoon City as well. Thank you. Item number 19, Madam Clerk, please.
Resolution 2017-184 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing of territory Abco Laboratories Incorporated to a Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors. City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation, and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 28.
Our presenter is Thomas Marshon. Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm here to present for you the sound item in front of you. Tonight in front of you is the last process of annexation of development known as the Abco Laboratories. The proposed territory is being annexed into CFD 2012-2, that provides funding for public safety services as well as open space operations and park maintenance. Abco Laboratories is located at 2450 South Watney Way, which is Solano Business Park. The development consists of approximately seven acres, and it's a construction of 118,000 square foot industrial warehouse. By conducting a public hearing tonight and completing the ballot procedures, we'll determine the adoption of the resolutions and complete the approval for the developer. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any answered questions.
Any comments or questions for Thomas? I again don't have any request to speak cards, but I will open, open the public hearing, and having, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Saying done, we'll close it and bring it back for council action. We're at, being asked to approve two resolutions, Resolution 2017-184 and 2017-185.
And we'll take the first one only first, because we'll need to declare the results of the election, so the first action would be to approve Resolution Number 2017-184.
Is there a motion to approve? Been approved? The motion has been made by Councilman Vaccaro, and the second is Councilman Moy, all, all in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously, thank you very much. And then Resolution 2017-185?
And we'll get the results of the election first.
Yep.
Deputy City Clerk? All right.
It's a yes vote for Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 28.
So now we'll be ordered, yes, to adopt Resolution Number 2017-185.
Moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Moy, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. And Resolution 2017-185. Open the ballot, please.
No, it's already done, so we'll have a second one coming up. So that's, that one is done, so now we, if the deputy clerk could read the resolutions for, under item 20?
Resolution 2017-186 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing of territory Sunrise Apartment Building, Sunrise Apartments, Building 700 to a Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors. City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 29.
Open the public hearing again, have no, no questions to speak, so?
Go ahead, I need to do my presentation, and then we'll go. There again, members, council, Tom Marshon, Public Works Manager. Tonight in front of you is the last process, again, of the annexation, known as the Sunrise Apartment Complex. The proposed territory is going to be annexed into CFD 2012-2, that provides services to public safety as well as open spaces and parks. The Sunrise Apartments is located at 2750 North Texas Street. The development consists of approximately 25,000 square feet, and it consists of 33 dwelling units. By conducting a public hearing and completing the ballot procedures completes the process for this adoption into the annexation. That concludes my presentation. You have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Thomas? Okay. We'll open the public hearing, have no request to speak cards, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Is there a motion to approve? Councilman?
It's be Resolution Number 2017-186.
Moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Moy, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
And we'll need the vote on this item.
It's a yes vote for Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 29.
And the motion now would be?
Been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Mayor and, and members of the council, we have, items 21, 22, 23, and 24, they will need to be put over to our adjourned regular meeting on the 25th due to conflicts of interest. So at this point in time, with consensus of, oh, I'm sorry, 22 is actually okay. That's correct. So strike that, we'll do 21, 23, and 24. Will need to be continued over to July 25th, so with concurrence of the council, you will see that on the agenda at the next meeting. And we can now go to item number 22.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Resolution 2017-189 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 Engineers Report, confirming the boundaries and ordering the levy and collection of assessments, and providing for notice of hearing thereof, for Maintenance District Number 7, Rolling Hills.
Members of council, Tom Marshon, Public Works Manager. Tonight is the Maintenance District, Rolling Hills, which was formed to provide ongoing maintenance, funding for maintenance for landscaping as well as electrical. The district is actually set up in the northwest side of Fairfield, which is off of Hillborne Road, and that's the location of that district boundaries. In front of you tonight is adoption of the resolutions approving the Engineers Report with the annual assessments. There's no increase in assessments this year for this project. By conducting a public hearing, we'll complete the final steps of the approval process for setting the assessments for 2017-2018 fiscal budget. That concludes my presentation. You have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? I will open the public hearing. Oh, have no request to speak cards, close the public hearing, and the vote, please.
The motion on this one means to adopt Resolution 2017-29.
Moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn now to item number 25, please.
Public Hearing and Resolution 2017-192 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting a negative declaration for the zone change... adopting a negative declaration for the zone change for a portion of a parcel located at 200 Red Top Road, APN 0180010120. And Introduction of an Ordinance 2017-07 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending Chapter 25, Article 1 of the Fairfield City Code to rezone approximately plus or minus 10.26 acres located at 200 Red Top Road, APN 0180010120, from the PF Public Facility Zone to the IL Limited Industrial and OSC Open Space Conservation Zones.
And our presenter is Brian Miller. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. This site was originally acquired, this 13.5-acre site was originally acquired to develop a park-and-ride facility for regional needs. As it was actually developed, though, only about three and a quarter acres were used for the park-and-ride facility and the remaining 10-plus or minus acres are basically surplus and will be marked, either marketed or held as an open space conservation area. So, we are asking for a zone change tonight. We will retain the PF facility on the existing park-and-ride lot, which you can see is the blue area on the map. The middle IL portion of the site, which will be the subject of a parcel map in the near future, will be rezoned IL, which is consistent with the surrounding industrial uses. The open space conservation at the northern end will be retained and reflects its use as a wetlands mitigation area along the creek corridor. At this, I can answer any questions on the project. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Brian? We'll open the public hearing. Have no request to speak cards, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back.
Right. First action for the councils to adopt Resolution 2017-192, which adopts a negative declaration for the zone change.
Moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vicaro, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And the next item is a motion to waive further reading, introduce for first reading, Ordinance Number 2017-07, which will actually rezone the subject property.
Been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Vicaro, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number 26, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Public Hearing and Introduction of Ordinance 2017-08 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting various revisions to Chapter 25, Article 1 of the Fairfield City Code, also known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairfield, regulating cross-references, clarifying alternative multifamily residential standards, establishing standards for trash toter placement in small lot neighborhoods, amending open space standards in small lot developments, conditionally permitting hotels in the REC zoning district, establishing fitness studios as a new land use, addressing regulation of personal instruction studios and schools, personal and social development, amending standards for non-food service drive-through businesses, and correcting the definition of boarding houses.
Our presenter, Brian Miller, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. As the title suggested, this is one of our annual, or biannual, periodic, I should say, corrections and updates to our zoning ordinance to address minor changes that we've identified over the years that reflect issues that we felt need to be addressed in the normal operation and implementation of the zoning ordinance. I would point out for the record that we did not bring before you some changes in the language reflecting solar, right, solar power and solar installations. We will be returning in the future with those regulations. I can answer any questions, of course, on any specific items.
Comments or questions for Brian? Okay. I will open the public hearing. Again, have no request to speak cards, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action.
And action, here's a simple one. It'd be a motion to waive further reading and to introduce for first reading, Ordinance Number 27, 2017-08, which adopts various revisions to the zoning code as outlined by Mr. Miller.
Been moved by Councilman Vicaro, seconded by Councilman Moy, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And we're done. We're done. We are adjourned until our next meeting will be next Tuesday evening, July 25th. Thank you very much for being with us. Good night.
Vicaro?